Nice letter.
It was. It is.
Okay, I guess I'll call this meeting to order. We'll start out with the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, then we move into roll call. Mayor Bader, present. Monko?
Present.
Groko?
Present.
Kufa, absent. Padilla?
Present.
Iker?
Present.
Okay, consider the agenda for September 2nd, 2020. And because of the attendance, I would move, if it's okay with council, that item 10D be moved to the top of the list of unfinished business because of the representatives we have here, so they don't have to sit here through all of our agenda to get to the bottom, because they're at the bottom.
Unless they object, they want to stay for the whole meeting. Oh, it looks like they're laughing.
Okay. If we could do that, then we just put that one up to the top and move everything down one, is what I'm asking for.
Laughing at us because we have to stay.
And with that, that's all I have. Is there any other additions, deletions, corrections, or go with that change? If so, I'd look for a motion to do so.
So.
Motion made by Jessica?
Second.
Second by Chad. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All same sign. Motion carries. Okay. Then we move on to comments, updates, and concerns, or anything from citizens. Okay, Erin, what you do is you just address the council with your name. And go on and tell us.
Um, so I wrote you all an email, and I just wanted to express our concerns on behalf of Dennis and I and my mom about the proposed off sale at the Fill Me Up station. And we just want to say, in our opinion, there's no reason to change. There's some ordinance that would have to be changed for this to be done. Well, bringing more business to our community is typically a good thing. We don't believe that this would be beneficial to us. In Gaylord, there's already two businesses that do sell off sale, and both of us are still trying to recover from the pandemic that we were forced to shut down for three months without warning. Now that we're open, there's so many restrictions on what we can do. We can only limit, or we're only at 52% capacity. We have to have only four people. We have to wear masks. People can't sit, we can't have a lot of people at the bar. They can't congregate. There's just so many things that we can't do, and off sale is one of our big things that we make money on. A lot of people are still not coming out to the bars, but they still do come to buy off sale. Bringing another off sale business isn't going to necessarily bring more revenue to town. It's just going to split it up between two people and then do it, or go between three people instead of two people. Both of us feel like we do a lot of donating and contributing to the local economy and to donations. And maybe if our sales keep going down the way they are, then we might not be able to do that anymore. These guys both live in town, have been here forever, and we feel like you're going to be taking away income from community members that are already here and giving it to a corporation that's not going to be spending it in town. If we weren't in the middle of a pandemic, I don't think we'd be fighting this as much, but with the current state of our industry, we don't believe that it will be good for us. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Erin. And I invite you again, like moving that agenda item, that invite you all of the stay here for that agenda item, if you could.
Yes.
Thank you. Anything else from citizens? Council members?
Actually, I do have that. Our cable commission is working on getting HD for our channels for the public access, and it's pretty exciting. It's going to be an upgrade for everything, and we might even be able to do live council meetings.
That's what we've been working for, for a long time.
Yes.
Good.
That's good news.
That's very good.
We've been talking about that for eight years, I think.
Yeah, we're very close. I know a disc from one of our council meetings actually got busted to our August 5th in the mail, so that shows how much we need to get going because it would be electric. Everything would just boom right up, so.
Perfect.
That'd be for all, for live, I'd be all for that, whatever it takes, so.
Good news, Jessica.
Thank you.
Anything else from council members? Staff?
I just wanted to let you know that jewel contracting started on the ditch by Al Hans today. So hopefully, it'll only be a few days and they'll have that fixed.
Looks like they had it buried when I came into town, so it's in finished grade now. Looks like the tile's in. Okay. Okay, then we move on to consent agenda. There, it's in front of you. Everybody had time to review it. Is there any questions, additions, deletions, or corrections on the consent agenda, or go as presented?
I'll make motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion made by Jessica?
I'll second.
Seconded by Tony to approve the consent agenda as presented. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Motion carries. And we have no reports tonight and no public hearings. Communication requests and petitions, media com and all of them there. Any questions or concerns about that?
I would just like to point out that the public feedback for the Highway 5 project, it does have an email in there. It's been out on our website, out on Facebook, so hopefully you guys can all get a chance to go and do your feedback in there. And the other one is we're having an open house for the Railroad Avenue project. That open house is going to be on September 10th. Just public information to let people know what we're looking at. And that is going to be at the fire station.
I just have one comment on that, and I'm going to be openly on it when I report back to them on my comments on this Highway 5 corridor project. I haven't, for some reason, I don't know why they're not looking at a roundabout out there, but bringing the Highway 19 in and helping our safety for that end of the, end of the city. That ain't even an option that they're putting in this time with the DOT or with the county. And I'm actually kind of upset at that. You know how many times I brought that up at every meeting, that we need a roundabout out there? Because if we don't have a roundabout, and I'm going to do this public right now, it's going to cost the city more money not having a roundabout because we got to reconstruct one of our nicklet avenues to go around another area to get further away from that intersection. So that's why I'm saying that we got to try and push for that roundabout. I'm asking city council, let's stick your guns on this and help this because it's going to cost the city more money for that intersection out there if we do not get a roundabout from the state. So that's my comment.
I'd say, I'd add to that, too. I, I agree that 19 should be pulled back and realigned there and a roundabout. Now, I'm wondering, can you check if, is it going to help our cause? Can we pass a resolution or something, Lori? We look into that, talking with Justin Black. If we need to pass a resolution to city council, at least that, that's really the only option we want as a city? And that's going to work for us?
I'd love to see that.
A roundabout?
Yeah, it's a roundabout or nothing. I'd love to see that.
Yes, that, I think, really, if we need to push the issue, maybe, maybe talk with Justin Black and see what kind of, is that going to get us anywhere or help our cause? Because I mean, why waste a bunch of money for something that ain't going to, I don't know.
It ain't going to benefit the city at this point with the options that they're showing. It's not benefiting.
I believe the second, it's either the first meeting or second meeting in October, Tim is going to come and do a presentation on the, you know, when we get our final product and everything. So give a, Tim and Justin will give the presentation on the Highway 5 study, since Tim is the lead and Justin is the thing. So yeah, I think it's worth getting on there and making it known.
When's that, when's that meeting at, or the next meeting on that?
This, this is what we're collecting. They're collecting the information until September 16th.
And that's online information?
This is online. It's an online presentation. It's about eight and a half minutes long. It has the three concepts. It kind of explains, you know, a little bit about each one of them. And then I think at the end, it's got like a little, I think there's three questions, you know, that you can check. And then it has a box where you can put in your comments.
So I urge council to go online and push for that roundabout.
I would also reach out to Senator Newman on that.
Okay.
He's head of transportation.
Yeah, because we have tried to set up a meeting, and we had one set up, Tim Becker and I and Justin, but he had to counsel because they were in a discussion.
Last thing I read on this is that it does not qualify for a roundabout, and I think that's bull because I've seen roundabouts in different situations that got less traffic than this does. So I think it's all bull. So we got to push for it as a city. Otherwise, it's not going to work. So we got to push as a city. Okay. Enough of that. And we move on to department committee reports and action items. We'll start out with administration department. Lori?
I got the paper from Tessa, put it in here, because the last time I didn't have the paper. And they're recommending, they're saying the market adjustment is 2% to 3%. So I was just looking for some direction on what number I should use in the budget.
First of all, I got a couple of questions about this study itself. On page 46 of the study, it lists amount of full-time employees, and it says we have 11. We actually have 12, so I'm not sure if she's aware of that or not, but it lists that wrong. And then it also talks about on the proposed pay scale or what the pay scale is at now on page 50, it leaves out Leighton. One of our employees. So I'm not sure, I mean, I'm pretty sure we gave him a lot of money to keep current on this, and I just, I just don't understand why the study's not correct. It's also interesting that they put a comment in there about the city administrator's position doing additional tasks, which I'm a little confused there, too, because I don't know who's doing EDA or planning and zoning. Because I thought that when Lori Dureen was moved up in pay grade, that she was responsible for a portion of one of those positions as well. So I'm a little confused on who's doing what for jobs. If, in fact, you're doing it, then what's going on with the other employees? Does that make sense, or?
So I am the economic development director, and I am the zoning administrator.
Okay.
And I think we did provide you with a copy of everybody's job descriptions?
No. We haven't gotten that. So then, last year, when, when the scales were all adjusted, it was said that Lori was going to be doing EDA, and that's why she went to a different scale.
No, she was going to be assisting with the, she was doing most of the zoning permits, the actual physical permit work.
I think that the jobs, the descriptions itself, need to be sent out to the council so that the council can fully understand who's doing what. If there isn't an increase in responsibility, then I'm not quite sure how that step increased, changed. And then also, the fact that the pay, the top end of that pay for that city administrator position is now $7 lower than, than last year. I mean, I think that needs to be brought into consideration as well. I don't know if that, this is something that we need to talk about at the actual budget meeting? Or if it's, seems like the last time I brought this up at a council meeting, I was told that we couldn't talk about personnel things at the meeting. So I don't know if that needs to be addressed at the budget meeting, or if that's something that we do here at the council meeting.
And I actually had a question on the utility billing clerk, because here it still says the 1885, but the last time I checked, when we approved this, she was still on probation. And I listened to the meeting, and numerous times it said there should be no increases till after probation is up. So I'm just kind of questioning that, too.
Well, she was just taken off probation a couple of months ago.
Yeah, so she just went to the 1885 a couple of months ago when she came off probation.
But we never approved that in our thing. So I'm just kind of wondering if and when she was moved.
Because if that's the case, then anybody who's coming off probation, so we said that we were going to wait until the beginning of the year, I thought, is how the promotions were going to work.
So she should have.
What is she at? I don't even know what she's at. So yeah, we can bring that back to the work session.
Perfect.
I think this whole topic should come back to the work session, and if you want to pencil in whatever you want for Cole, and council can nix it and do whatever they want with it at the time. But I want you to be prepared when you're coming into budget that I'm not going to be very positive on anything that's double-digit coming into a budget increase. So if you want to work on it very hard, I'm not going to be very positive on anything that's a double-digit. So it's got to be a single-digit coming into the budget workshop, just to be aware. I think all councils agree with me on that because that's where we got to be. We had a significant increase last year, and we cannot do it again, so it's. So work hard and keeping that down. Okay? Anything else, Lori?
Nope.
Nothing from city services, police department, or ambulance tonight, fire department. Okay, we're going to move down. So we're moving into the application for the off-sale liquor at Fill Me Up. And you heard from Erin, last meeting, you heard from Dennis. Heard their concerns on this. And I did do some research myself, and I would, I would hope that council does the same as I did. And it is in our ordinance that we cannot approve it right now without changing an ordinance. On Chapter 113-22, Section B, it lists off-sale intoxicating liquor license which may be issued only to exclusive liquor stores or drugstores that have off-sale liquor license which was issued on or before May 1st, 1994. And then it goes on to say the fee of an off-sale intoxicating liquor license established by the city council member under 113-23 shall not exceed $100 or greater, among which the permit by Minnesota statute 340-8.408 subsection 3, as may be amended from time to time. So this is our current ordinance. So according to our current ordinance, we cannot accept that unless we change the ordinance. Also, I went in and looked into Minnesota alcohol gambling enforcement. Municipality should not issue more than one off-sale liquor license for any person for any place, and that's under the subsection. And the cities of the first class, not more than one off-sale per 5,000. That's a statute by the state. Understandably so, we're a charter city, so we don't have to be 100% by the state, but that's the guidelines by the state, one off-sale by 5,000 people. So I'm just using these as references. And I totally agree with these guys here. They're, they're suffering because of this COVID stuff.
I'll make a motion to deny the application of, for Fill Me Up for the off-sale liquor due to the fact that we do not want to change our ordinance.
I'll second. But I have a question, then. Did they submit payment with this application right away, or? Okay.
So I have a question, too. When, Erin, when did you get your license for off-sale?
2005.
So then the city issued one in 2005.
Restaurant. Restaurant.
But it was off-sale, though?
Our restaurant is by, they're not exclusive. Restaurant is different.
Okay.
Restaurant is different. That's in the state statute also.
So then we don't have to change our ordinance to do that?
We do not have to change our ordinance. We don't have to do nothing. That's my opinion.
Okay, I just was asking.
Yep, that's my opinion. Because I'm going to, well, the motion's been made in second, but the state's looking at getting rid of 3.2 anyway. So let's just let the state do their thing. And we leave ours the way it is. State comes down with something different, we follow it then.
My point to my comment is we should refund them.
Refund their money, exactly. Okay, the motion's been made by Jessica, seconded by Chad, to deny the off-sale liquor license to Fill Me Up. Any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Motion carries. Okay, their license has been denied.
And I'll re, we'll return the check.
And return their money, please, yes. Okay, moving on. Thank you, everybody. So we're done with your part. If you want to leave at this point, you may.
Thank you, Gary.
Thank you.
Now we'll move on to 10A. This is a draft ordinance of 2020-340, an ordinance amending the city code section 92.22H regarding tall grass, first reading. Erin, you are online?
Yes, I am.
Okay, if you want to give us a little background on that, please?
So this is on for a first reading. We had discussed it at the last council meeting, and based on the input that I received at that time, I did not make any changes to the draft that was previously presented. So I think the thoughts of the council seemed to be that it presented a decent balance between allowing there to be the pollinator gardens in some fashion. Not trying to do too much, but allowing a reasonable amount of space to be used. I did, let's see. We did base it on the percentage of the total lot size, which should make it easier for as keeping track of, we did 25% of total parcel. We kept the 10-foot setback between, or from other properties or roadways. And then we put in there that the city council could establish a fee for the inspection. Just the idea was just enough to offset the costs if the city had to send a employee or hire somebody. So I don't know if anyone has any questions?
Is everybody hearing Erin okay? Okay, anybody have any questions of Erin? I think it's pretty straightforward. We went through it a couple of times and did our amendments and so forth. And like you stated, right now, it's going into the first reading. Basically, no changes from that, the last corrections.
I just wanted to ask one, if there's any interest from council, because I know the fee, how much is the current fee proposed?
$25.
We still want to keep that? Is that the consensus of the council yet?
Well, I think we were looking at using that to pay.
Pay the inspector.
Okay.
And he has not gotten back to me yet. I've sent him two emails, and I still haven't gotten a response.
Okay. What about, is there any appetite, can we, can we drop the signatures from neighbors thing? I know Tony's probably, and that's okay. I mean, I'm just, I'm trying to, is there any, is there still a full consensus on that, or can we get rid of that? You willing to budge a little on that, Tony, or?
Yeah, I mean, I guess at this point, if the entire council's in favor of this, these pollinator gardens, I'm not going to hold back the signature piece of it. I guess it doesn't make any sense.
I'll leave the fee thing alone. We'll get that, I guess Lori will find out what that cost is. I understand, so I won't bring that up again, but I think if we could drop that, that would go a long way with some of the folks here, and I.
I would hope at this point, if we're going to actually apply for it, that they would talk to their neighbors anyway and say, this is what we're going to do, and do their background. And if it ends up being a problem, we'll have to deal with it later. You know, I don't see it being a huge number at this point. And maybe it will grow, I don't know. But I think, yeah, I agree with you, Chad, that it lets a little, make it a little less restrictive at this time. But I do agree that we need to have the fee in there to help cover the inspector if we're going to go with an outside inspector, and not have somebody on our payroll.
That sounds like a compromise, I guess, to me. I don't, Jessica?
I'm fine with that.
Lynn, you, you okay with that?
Yep.
Erin, did you hear that?
Yep, I got that. And so I think if the council is inclined, they could just motion to accept the first reading of the ordinance, and then we'll put it on the agenda for a second reading at future next meeting.
Okay. So you heard what Erin said about accepting the first reading, and that it's according to draft ordinance 2020-340? With the understanding what we just talked about. And then we'll move on to a second reading.
So then that is item number eight on the application, so I'm just going to take that off entirely.
Yes.
Okay.
Again, if somebody'd like to move forward with a motion?
I'll make a motion, go ahead and move forward with that first reading. The draft ordinance 2020-340, amending the city code section 92.22H regarding tall grass, with the one change discussed, that we have consensus by the council to eliminate the signatures from joining property owners.
I'll second it.
Motion made by Chad, seconded by Lynn, to move forward with the first reading of ordinance 2020-340, amending the code section 92.22H regarding tall grass. And this is a first reading with eliminating number eight, correct, Lori? Number eight?
Yes, number eight on the.
Number eight with having approval from the neighbors. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Motion carries. So then we'll move on to a second reading before it comes into effect.
Does somebody have a comment back there?
Liz, I was going to.
Oh. Do you need clarification? Okay.
It's all going in your direction. All right, it's all going in your direction. We eliminated the neighbors, so Tony can't come to your house.
When will the second meeting be held, then? The next meeting?
Probably next meeting, yes.
Okay.
Yes, that's normal process, yes. So the second meeting in September. Okay, then move on to 10B, resolution number 2020-47. This is a resolution approving appraisal report survey and authorizing deposit pursuit to Minnesota statute section Erin, you give us some background on that also, please?
Yes, this is the next step in the eminent domain process for the Willer property. We need to have the council officially approve the appraisal that we, we had done on it. We haven't officially done that yet. The other thing is, we had to have the property surveyed so that we could get a legal description. So Avery completed that survey, and the survey came out to 0.3 acres more than what we originally estimated. So it's 17.7 acres. And so that slightly increased the acquisition cost based on the appraisal amount. And so the resolution approves the appraisal, approves the survey, and authorizes the city to make that purchase deposit amount with the court, and then it's next step on the process.
Can I have the corrected amount of the appraisal? Somebody got that figure for me? Okay, because I want to put that into the motion.
That's, that is part of the resolution. It's at the bottom of the resolution.
Well, I guess I'm not reading it, but I just want it in front of me so I can say it.
And this just goes on hold at the court, right? Erin, through the process?
Yeah, because the property owner so far has not given any indication that is agreeable or interested in selling, so that's what we have to do.
No, there it is. I got it. Sorry, Chad.
No, just letting you know.
Okay, there you got. Any questions of Erin on that? This is something we've been working for it, towards any way we've offered them X amount of dollars, no response. So it's the next step, I guess. I don't like doing this, but that's what we got to do. And it's fair. It's all market value.
Okay, I'll make a motion, approve resolution 2020-47.
Chad's made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second?
Second by Jessica. To move forward to resolution 2020-47, which includes the re-survey and ends up being at 162, 162,751.50. This is moving forward with the Willer property for redevelopment. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Both same sign?
Aye.
Okay, we got three in favor and one against. Tony was against. Motion carries. Okay, then we move on to 10C. This is a townhome proposal in Pond Meadows. And we got the developer here tonight. And his name is Brett.
Yeah, I'm Brent Harrison. And as a brief overview, I'm seeking approval for the proposal. Proposed TIF layout to fund building of four multifamily units in Pond Meadows. We are signing a total of 16 rental units, 1,600 per unit. We'll have a feature single level living. I think we maybe have a quick layout of that. Four per units will fall inside the calculated rental provision. So, they'll fit. At this point, each unit costs about 900,000. We are prepared to start with two units and have pretty much everything in place. We're just looking for the right location. The TIF is required in this case to make the overall project cash flow. You might find there's a couple of overviews from Northland Securities that they put together of what the TIF would look like. Those proposals show what the proposed liability would be and what the over figures are.
I do have one question on the TIF. What I'm reading in here, is this a pay-as-you-go or is the city financing this TIF?
Pay-as-you-go.
Pay-as-you-go. So, they're going to get the credits? So, they pay upfront and they get the credits off of TIF? The city isn't fronting the money?
Right. So, they would have to pay their property taxes and then we would refund it. Pay-as-you-go.
Pay-as-you-go. That's the way I know. That's the way we've been doing TIF. That's why I'm asking that question. Otherwise, I think it's a good project and we need to move forward. I just want to clarify so everybody understood, it's a pay-as-you-go TIF that we normally do.
What is, what is the $120,000 in dirt work? What does that mean?
That's the dirt work. That's similar to what we did for the Brand lot. This is just an estimate. I would respect that this developer would say if it's coming into a under $120,000, they're going to pass on them savings to the city so we're not paying extra money. This is just an estimate going by what was in that lot that the Brands had.
So, that would be considered a recoverable cost that he could claim on TIF?
We'll get it back. It's just we'll get it back in tax increments.
So, no, we're not paying anything upfront?
It just seems like a lot of people that I've talked to are opposed to TIFs. And what they continue to see is the city giving these TIFs away versus people coming in that want to buy property, the lot, and build upon it themselves.
Somewhat I'd agree with you, Tony, but at the same aspect that we're at in the situation we're at in this area, that because of what happened in the Brand property, I think the city's got to put its best foot forward and keep this development going because of that aspect of that underground, underlying ground that we have to take care of. It's a mistake the city did way back when, when they did what they did, and we got to correct it, bottom line. And that's what we did with the Brands. And that's what we do here with this development, same thing. So, it's.
What value are we placing on the land, actually? If there's no soil corrections that are needed, which I agree the city should stand behind. I mean, but that aside, what value are we putting on the land?
What were we asking for that lot?
175.
That's what we had in the previous agreement with initial was 175. This, here, I don't have anything. That's part of the reason why we're talking about it, because I need to know what number we want for the property.
Because essentially, what number we put in the property will be recovered by TIF.
Um, yes, that means that the city would get that TIF and he would not.
But he's, the way I read it, he's eligible for the 700, the maximum, what did it say there? With the email I sent you, what page was that on, Lynn?
So, it's the 754,000. That's at present value.
Okay, well, just using those numbers. So, that's the max value the developer's eligible for the project costs. Okay. But then it says, based on the adopted budget for the TIF district, tax increment may be used to reimburse project costs.
So, if we put in a cost for land, he's not going to get that much.
So, essentially, what you're doing to make this TIF work, you're giving him the lot for nothing?
Correct. That is how this is set up.
But it says, but the TIF can reimburse up to 917,000, right? That's, that was my question. We can't.
And we are, we are getting 61,651 for administrative fees. And that is 5% administrative fee.
What is the total cost or total reimbursement through TIF that the city will receive? If it's TIF the way it's planned, then where you got to.
Right here, right now, without adding a cost for the land, we will receive 61,651.
We're just getting the administration fees.
I mean, that's 175,000 you're losing on the property and potentially another 120,000 in the dirt. That's almost 300,000.
120,000 doesn't have anything to do with us about dirt.
Well, isn't that what we're saying, is that we're going to fix that dirt and it could potentially cost that?
It's not what we're saying. He's saying that's approximately what he'll have to do with putting in his driveway, putting in his foundation work, that kind of stuff.
The normal, the, just the normal.
Normal, regular stuff. So, that would be a recoupable cost for him. So, like, he has to prove that he's got, you know, this amount of money worth of expenses before he can get, you know, recoup the cost. So, that would just be part of his cost that he could say is part of my building cost, then that would be included in his recoupable cost.
Part of the TIF returned through taxes.
Yeah.
So, do we have concerns about that dirt and that the city's going to be spending money to not get it right, like we did Brands?
Uh, not under this plan now. The way that's set up, he'd be responsible because he'd recover it through TIF.
And the soil borings that we did have, I think that there is only like two to two and a half feet of fill on top, which he'll be taking out because you have to dig down four feet, correct, for foundation?
Correct.
Because these are slab-on grade.
And refresh the council on the year on this TIF plan?
How many years?
Yeah, 15.
It's a 15, yeah. Basically, we just took the one that was previously done and just modified it a little bit with current numbers. The only thing is, I don't have anything in for the land, so that's what the decision is. What are we going to do?
So, the city will get 61,000 through TIF?
Correct.
Okay.
As it reads right now.
Yes.
I know the last time that we were going through this process, the city had money invested and, and to looking at all these different things. And so, it was addressed that if this happened again, we were going to collect some money, some like an earnest money, so that we didn't, we weren't out. The city wasn't out. Was that talked about in this discussion, in case something, something doesn't happen, that the city's out again because we pay attorney's fees and we pay.
No, because those fees have already been paid. Tammy is going to just use a minimal fee of approximately 1,500 to adjust the current one. We only paid 8,700, I believe, out of the 10,000 that we were supposed to pay her for the original agreement. And Stephen Rochell only charged us half of his, his fee. I think he, we paid 30, 3,500 and his fee was 7,000. But he only charges 3,500 since we didn't complete it.
And no attorney fees then?
Not for this, because we use a bond attorney and Tammy.
Question for the developer. I know you're putting in four units. How quick are the other 12 units going to be placed? Is there a stipulation on this TIF to do that?
Um, yes, as it says, he is doing two, two units of four now, and then 2,000.
In five years.
Five years, the other ones, okay?
Completed by, in or by 2025, it says in there.
Okay. Then I'm fine, as long as we, I don't want to see something get half there and then it don't get finished. As long as there's an end game and.
He is already, you already have your contractor secured and he's already got his financing pre-approved.
Okay.
Right?
Yep.
I'm fine with it then.
Sounds, it sounds exciting.
So, if council wants to move forward and we get this guy moving forward, get some more building on out there, it'd be great. So, we'll need a motion to move forward.
What do you think, Tony?
I'm just not in favor of, of the TIF at that property. I think that we're just, we continue to get questions from residents of our community. They feel that the council's giving everything away. People continue to approach us about these things. And I understand the importance of it to get something going out there, but I, I, I think that the TIF isn't the right way. That's just my opinion.
How TIF works is, we're not really giving anything away. The TIF is an incentive to build something. So, the only way we get more tax increment is if something's built on that property. Currently, we're getting nothing because the city owns it and we will still get nothing if nobody builds on it. So, if they build, then at least we're getting something and we're not giving anything away. He doesn't get paid anything unless he builds something.
It's paid me off of taxes.
So, all that, basically what we're doing is reimbursing him a percentage of his property taxes. So, we're not giving anything away because we won't get anything if nobody builds anything there.
Oh, but this is a far better deal than the, than what we have gone out there so far. We're, we're really behind on the first residential lot going, you know what I'm saying that way. And hopefully, there's only, there's the limited, only maybe a lot or two more than, than type of major issues out there, but.
It's a normal procedure, Tony. I had TIF when I built my Napa building. It's a normal procedure that you do to get things in, to get taxes. So, it's just a normal, it's normal. Now, that building's sitting out there paying all kinds of taxes every year because the TIF is out. So, it's.
That's how the Iverson building got built. That's how all that stuff along there got built. A lot of the downtown buildings got built that way. Yeah.
Yeah, unlike, unlike the Iverson one, you know, that Iverson one, I think that was the, I forget how many hundreds of thousands of dollars that.
The city fronted the money.
That, that was, that was basically, if it was a million dollars, whatever it was, the city paid for that upfront. And then, that carries a lot. It's a different.
Yeah, and then they paid the bond payments, yeah?
So, we, this is the way to go. Pay-as-you-go TIF. I have no problem with pay-as-you-go TIF.
And can, I mean, can't we get something for that property then?
We are, 61,000 when we're all done, administrative costs. So, we're getting 61,000.
Right, but the property that we're, is asking is a 175 and 61,000 administrative fees over that period really isn't.
My, I understand where Tony's coming from to, you know, if we ask for $10,000 for that lot, I mean, is that a deal breaker, Brent?
Yes.
Okay.
There's just not enough cash flow. This, if you build a leased, you know, you can get more rent. So, one of the drawbacks is the state mandates low income rules.
20%.
You would do the 20% option, correct?
I would.
Okay.
Income qualified. It's not necessarily low income. Yeah, income qualified.
20%, that's state mandate.
50% median income for the county, which of course is a little bit lower. So, that's why in this community it's a little bit tougher.
Did you rent the units then?
Yes.
I would, I'm kind of with Tony. I mean, I would, I want some cash upfront for the property also. I mean, I, I really do feel that way, Tony, but I want, I, you got your ducks in a row, it seems like, Brent, your financing and everything lined up and.
How soon would you start construction on this?
Well, before Monday, we'd be ready this fall. One of the issues that we're running into right now is building products are skyrocketing. Rooking products went up 15% yesterday. So, if I don't get this signed really quick, it's just not going to happen.
I contest that. I went to Menards yesterday. I couldn't believe they were out of two-by-fours. I was totally shocked. So, I'm right with you on that. Just started the building material.
I mean, there's, I mean, we're, we're ready to go. I, there's just no guarantee. My understanding is, once we submit the plans to the state, normally that's like four to six weeks. And right now, they're eight to 10 weeks out. So, even if we do this today, that puts us in jeopardy of getting it before the ground freezes. We've really got to, it's, it's either now or we're going to wait.
But your main plan is if you kill and everything combines in place, you would start this fall, yeah?
I would definitely prefer to start this fall.
That's what I like to hear.
There, I mean, it's five months construction, so if we can get it started late this fall, we'll be ready for next spring.
Perfect. Understandably so. You can anticipate setbacks, but if your plan isn't start this fall, that helps too.
When is the end date on the first one?
He said he'd be ready by spring if he can start this fall.
It's five months of construction.
And do we have that in the contract or a contract type thing where he can sign that it will be done then?
I don't have it yet, no. In our purchase agreement, it's 24 months. So.
Yeah, you can't probably give them that narrow window though, because you can't, like, we just talked about anticipating the, the product shortages and the weather and all this other stuff. You can't give them a five-month window to be done. That's, that's impossible. It'd be great it's going to be done in five months. That's what he anticipates, but if there's setbacks, he can't control that.
Right. No, I just want an end date. That's not.
But I think it's in there that it's got to be in within.
The first two townhome buildings are planned for construction commencement and completion in 2021. And then with the final two buildings completed by 2025.
So, it could be anytime next year, but not necessarily this spring. Because he's, like he said, he could have setbacks. And I understand that. When I firsthand had it last night myself, so.
Now, with all things considered, I think, I'm excited about it, Brent. I hope, I hope we can get it going and.
I am too.
I'll make, I will move to approve resolution number 2020-47, approving the, oh, whoops, that's the wrong one.
I don't have a resolution yet. It's just.
We just go with this with a motion.
A motion, yeah. So, you'll have to approve the, the TIF agreement and the development agreement once we get it put together.
Okay. Well, my motion is to go ahead with the, move ahead with this townhome development based upon what we have in front of us right now with the Northland, what Northland Public Finance has drawn up here, based on those conditions here set forth in front of us.
Motion made by Chad and seconded by Jessica. This is to move forward with the townhome proposal in Pond Meadows. And this is the plans and, and final TIF agreements will come forward after we get all the numbers crunched and go forward. This is just a motion to move forward and make sure that he can start getting his ducks in a row more. So, all in favor signify by saying aye.
I just want to clarify, there's a, there's going to be another motion on the actual agreement of everything?
There'll be a final approval.
Approval of the document, actual document.
We're, we're moving forward, but we got to prove the documents when all the numbers get crunched and put into the final documents.
It'll be official TIF, right?
And they couldn't do that until we get this first step.
Right.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries. Thank you, Brett.
Thank you.
Glad to have you building in our town.
Brett, where are you from?
Arlington.
Arlington?
I think we've got one single family rental in town here.
Okay.
Great. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, we do not have any new business and it brings us all down to closing comments. And I'm going to ask some closing comments from council if there's any. Sounding pretty quiet. How about staff? Quiet on that end too. Jessica, you know what to do.
Motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Seconded by Tony. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, we're adjourned, thank you everyone, it was a very good meeting.
Work session next week, Wednesday night.
Next week, Wednesday night, 6:30. Perfect. You do have a planning and zoning right before that, right?
We do, at 5:30.
Okay. Chase them out here by 6:30.